December 31st, 2026. Which is required for her position.
I'll make the motion to introduce.
And this is Teresa Calloway.
December 31st, 2026. Which is required for her position. I'll make the motion to introduce.
I'll second that motion. Do you have any other questions?
I think. Which is required for her position.
What happened? That it cancels now that she's no longer in office and then so we have to have a new one for the new S.
Further discussion? They have a motion to second to approve Teresa Calloway's bond at $30,000 from October 22nd through December 31st, 2026. Those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Do they have any conference requests?
No, we do not.
No conference requests, so now we'll move to Teresa Calloway's session. Just throw a name inside the floor there.
I emailed some papers. I'm sure did you guys. This here is for the commentary, but it's called equal view. This is what's been looking at, trying to hit for two years. Um, this will help us in our office and with this, um, it takes pictures. It's not like satellite pictures. They're a little bit more depth. Like drones, planes. So this will help us. We have 17,974 parcels every year, or I mean in our county. We have to assess around 4,400 to 4,500 in here. Is what it will require to do for reassessments. Um, plus we do the improvements and renewals or removals. Um, new sales if we need to review those new builds. This year, not everyone gets a permit from the building department. Um, so this year will help us catch that. They will fly every other year. Um, first time they will fly will be early spring of 26. And this year when they do that, um, they will get drawings of the buildings, the concrete pads, um, fences, pools. And give us something to go look up. And then if after second time they fly, which will be in 28, it will give us information to show us where there maybe was something that's a little bit different. And then, um, our field rep, which is Nexus, Mike is with me here today. Um, they can go out and take a look at it and there's something that pops up that says, hey, there's something that's changed or something that's different here. To get that taken. It has went to the commissioner or council, county council, and so now I'm here. So we are not replacing Sandy Hippel, retired in October as well, and so we're hoping to.
Six-year contract?
It is a six-year contract. It's 57,755.
Per year?
Per year.
And the council approved?
Is this, uh, based on all of the beautiful dollars? Would the. Uh, ask. Contribution be? Be. And then for some.
I have to give. Ask them to provide economic. Council. Through. As a pass.
Those that count of work. That's your office. Ask. Would you go? Yeah, I think the work for the solar is really we're getting ready to up and get some of that done. We have two places, parcels that we've done already. Um, I think. In November, we're gonna do, we're gonna start one out and get stuff like that. That's our goal to get. Yes, to get all of this order. Press. Like you said. F. Two.
Think tonight. If she could take away on that, then that could be a conversation. And I think as we. Just speaking, I think we need to work with council. With that. Which their. You know, their stats might be. That's, that's. Like, it doesn't hurt to ask. I'm not opposed to asking. I don't know if we're doing that. Yeah.
I, I don't make a motion. I don't make. Go ahead. Yeah. Will be okay.
Also. They have a motion and a second to approve a contract with equal view. It's a six-year contract. At 57,755 dollars and 61 cents per year for six years. Any further discussion? They none? Those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed. Congratulations. Thank you. How long you want to do that?
The gentleman before that is supposed to be here Wednesday afternoon, so if any of you want to see it.
Do you have a document for us to sign?
Yes.
One of those.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Earl.
I am here speaking, the battery energy storage martory. Uh, the new borough will bear on September 11th. But it's six, maybe I want to go. To a 12-month battery, battery energy storage. Then on October 6th, the board, um, had decided to accept it with the conditions of changing 12 months to 6 months. If force doesn't think. Let's find that, uh, martory before that. On October 8th, it's been opposed by my favor and unopposed to. Uh, approving your recommendation for justice. So it increases. And then there is going to be an acquit language and martory. Um, that means additional language beyond the first version that means for purposes of this evidence. Evidence in martory that's only applicable to every storage energy. So that meeting was on October 8th and it was the best of our. Uh, with battery. Ridge, martory.
Well, so my understanding though was you guys sent it back with comments and it sounds like they got their last means essentially accepted and read it.
There's no action required.
Yeah, correct. Because you sent it back and they, because they, from what I've read in the email. Additional changes. Not that I can see it. Okay. As of the date that it's.
Any progress on language?
Um, well, there's been a little bit more language that was added to what was sent, recorded to. Uh, there were still some questions that he was working on that he has questions on the reverse. Otherwise, we're going to try and we'll have our regular discussion on Tuesday. And we'll discuss further and further on that. Get it. I don't know. I can't say confidently that I feel this solid enough going on by the. But it would just on. There are still some questions I said that. But it's already in.
Will you give us an update every month or will you give us an update this summer?
I, I obviously will have an update beyond probably by Friday beyond that.
Okay. I'd appreciate it if you could give us an update during.
Yes, yes.
Is that it? And I'll ask one more time. Jacob, there's no action? It's in fact, October 8th.
October 8th, 25.
All right. And made some progress. Thank you.
Yes, yes, we have.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shell Fox from the DMA.
Um, we're looking at the 88. Question. To allow the president. Let us know of any. Facilities. Correcting local. By giving them a platform. Tell us about. A whole bunch of. Do we have December 15th after?
10 o'clock.
You would have drainage board at 10, wouldn't you?
10:00. 15:00. Oh, December. Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry.
Good.
Um, the other question?
I'd say here.
Monday, December 15th, 10:30. What is, just, uh. Try to.
So it's basically just allow the public to come in and voice their. About whatever 88 places. That they are. That way, because otherwise I have to file documents. Documents. And if we do it this way, trying to count things, press them, abolish. That are funding.
And it's just for county owned building?
Correct.
And. You oversee only county. And if. So maybe you could just maybe. If someone has a concern about sidewalking. My county owner in another community, do they go to those agencies?
So what I'm gathering about sidewalks. I'm not quite sure. That's a file. If it's in the town. Or I'm not quite sure of all that. But we.
I, I just use the sidewalk as an example. So the consultant's helping.
Yes.
Very good.
Yep.
Very good. You'll advertise this speech?
Yep. For what? We get. Big. All. All. Beings. There are five, or we have the one, there are five that about to march. The titles. But these next five beings are all part. Yes. Either. Not an elective meeting. Either. Fight. Reviewable. It's a third task.
Advertise that? Be ready. Thank you. Next start of our agenda is BS updates. Cam, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Very well.
Wonderful. All right, here we are. Uh, before I get into the project specifics, there's. Um, there's an update I want to provide. It is in regards to an AEP utility upgrade that's occurring in the area. This is unrelated to the solar projects, but we've been notified that there's going to be some improvements occurring. We don't have further information at this time as to where or when or what they will be upgrading. We're looking further into this as we are anticipating calls to come in about unknown vehicles violating road use. And other things to that nature. So we are actively looking further into it and will provide further information as we receive. Okay, into the compliance items. Uh, Mammoth Project. So a landscape buffer field visit is scheduled for Friday, November 7th. With county officials to review the Mammoth North dense screening locations in Stark County. The purpose of this is to ensure everyone shares the same understanding of expectations moving forward with planting the dense vegetation buffer. Uh, I will not be in attendance as I will be at training that day, but our staff will be onsite documenting and following up with items accordingly. Into last week items, on Thursday, October 30th, a setback site visit inspection was completed. With representation from the Drainage Board, VS, and the developer. All the southern locations inspected were in compliance. In the central area, a few adjustments are still being made and a second site visit will likely occur either next week. Or the week following to verify the corrections. Also on that day, there was an emergency response meeting. Uh, this was their monthly scheduled meeting, but during which they discussed an incident involving a worker and equipment which occurred previously. Uh, the response protocols were followed, EMS responded promptly. And the individual was determined it needed to be airlifted to care. At this time, to the best of our knowledge, he's making a full recovery. Uh, RUA fines were issued last Monday and another round is anticipated for this Friday. Now roadway maintenance continues to be handled well. Town and country have remained timely with repairs. There is ongoing discussion between Gary at the Highway Department and the developer regarding County Road 100 North. Between 700 and 600. Focusing on how to best preserve it through the winter months. Uh, the light issue along 200 is still in discussion and we're still actively pursuing this topic. We have not been notified of any correction. However, we continue to monitor until this is resolved. And then on the budget side, earlier today, I sent a detailed breakdown to the county's attorney and developer's attorney. Highlighting the distribution of our hours and the specific tasks they're distributed to. Once that's reviewed, we'll have additional discussions to make further funding is in place to support the county's compliance oversight. As of now, we are 90% through the additional funding that had been utilized. Uh, we're anticipating that will exceed, that will be exceeded by the end of the month. So we're actively pushing for that. So more to come on that one. That's all I had on Mammoth. Was there any questions before I get to the other ones? Because I do have updates on those. Okay, for May Apple, we did not have a progress meeting over the last two weeks. However, we are anticipating meeting with them in November. Uh, this will be following their AEP interconnection agreement and coordinating with them with May Apple and Mammoth moving forward. We did however, meet with both Moss Creek and Bottle Brush. And so the progress meeting for Moss Creek was October 27th on Monday. Uh, so we had heard rumors of that the developer might be selling this project. So we asked them directly and they had confirmed they are not planning on selling. They're preparing to begin their road use agreement discussions with Gary and Carla. And we will be coordinating that in the coming months with them. Uh, this project remains on schedule for pre-construction late spring and construction in the summer of 26. And then Bottle Brush, we met with them on Tuesday, October 28th. Uh, they're, they reassigned us to a new project manager, uh, still keeping with the company. Again, no insight of them selling. And they are on track for more summer to late summer activities occurring. Uh, they are, they have a similar timeline, it appears, with May Apple as they seem to be working with AEP as well. And that covers everything for, at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions from the county.
Tim, concerning the vegetation. Want to back to that? How is that progressing?
So they are going to be preparing areas of where the dense vegetation upgrades are going to be. There was some waivers signed. So we are going to be getting updated maps from them. Uh, and then the site visit is going to be determining. Any further necessity, any further needs to that. So we're going to go out and look at different locations that they have dense buffers up there and confirm that that is in line with everyone's expectations.
Thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Jacob, have you had any conversation lately with their. The Terrell's attorney concerning the financing or the budget? Did you?
I don't have. If he approved it in the last. For who used. If big and ten percent.
Yeah.
And so anything we were above that. Go and get. But as far as.
We're working on. West End.
I'm not, I did not capture everything Jacob said, but I did send him over the updated numbers today. And so he is going to be coordinating moving forward. So it took a little bit for our analysis of that.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
But a few items on your discussion. First, the farm lease MJM trust letter.
So, um, Megan Wagner, which is the trustee of the MJM Trust. She has sent a letter regarding that she is, and I'll read it to you. On behalf of the MJM, MJM Trust and our family, we'd like to express our sincere gratitude for the opportunity our father had to. Farm the Plaski County farm over the past several decades. It was truly a privilege for him to steward this land. He took pride in his work and in the strong collaborative relationship. He maintained with the commissioners throughout the years. His dedication to the farm and to the county was evident in every season. And he considered it an honor to contribute to the agricultural legacy of Plaski County. With his passing, the MJM Trust has made the decision to discontinue Alexander Farms operations. At the conclusion of the 2025 harvest. This marks the end of a meaningful chapter and we thank you for the trust and partnership extended to our father over the years. This is Megan Webb, uh, trustee.
Thank you. So. Need to do a response proposal? Y'all. Figure that?
Okay.
Well, normally you would essentially.
Well, normally you would essentially put it out. Your offer. You have to.
Publish a really good paper.
Yep.
And big proposals. To build a farm. To farm. Can we make it so it's just President's last guy?
So. I think I'm the responsible bidder of the sketch.
Yeah.
Jason. What I don't know, because like I've done this for the best. I haven't seen the. With. Maybe that. Because you may want to. Now would be the time to do it.
Can you find out if there is a person? Let us. Provide it to us. Discuss any concerns that you may have. If there is. And we could discuss it at our. Next.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Get it down. Get it on. Don't keep us up. Thank you. Gary was added to the agenda about the multi-brIDGE we have project bidding.
Yes. Just kind of wanted to get to the crossings matching the brand with the project next year and going to take this project out to bid. Advertising. Then we will have bids submitted by the first history. Advertising big.
You provide us, we will put this, so thank you. Thank you, Gary. Any other items for discussion? Well, I told Teresa working on my calendar, so looking at some posts. Keeping everything the same, I just typed out the dates for commissioner meetings and holidays. Just asking you to look it over and get that approved. Next meeting. But meetings follow line of what we're doing now. And the holidays, which is on the reverse side, is pretty much in line with what we're, what we've done. Of course, in '26, there are two elections.
I had several after the first of the year. They took. And then I also. I'm not. Doing that.
Well, the reason was. Thought we could get better out of this. They knew for sure that they. They just gave. They might. Oh. The. So. Oh. Oh.
Well, I think like the one thing that comes. There are some things. There are conditions. That govern the body. Like. Oh. And. All. You guys. As you make it.
We used to. Oh. Fine.
Jenny. Probably. I think there are actually two separate, but kind of related issues here. On the one hand, what Mike is getting at with appointed full-time department heads. The commissioners, as he said, you know, they said that that uncertainty isn't good for employee morale and quite frankly, there have been some issues in the past because the commissioners have maybe not as been as consistent as would be ideal in doing annual, like regular performance evaluations of department heads. It's always been sort of a reactive thing. Whereas like the CDC will do mine every year. And we had some past terminations where whether they were the right decision or not, I think came as complete surprises to those department heads who had not been taken in through a performance evaluation, not necessarily been written up and then commissioners decided they just didn't want those in that position. That said, in a, beyond that issue, I feel like I've noticed over the last several years that the commissioners, and this is not really reflective of this board so much as the last couple of boards maybe, kind of got off track with being consistent about making sure the various board appointments they're making. Unless, you know, I came and said, hey, we need a new CDC appointment. Under the old structure, Carla comes and says, hey, so-and-so is up for renewal, they want to keep or they. I feel like there are a lot of places where it just hasn't happened. I remember a conversation a couple of years ago where somebody resigned from the Board of Aviation Commissioners and everybody seemed to think that they're just appointed for lifetime appointments until they resign, but they're supposed to be on four-year terms. And so at some point, somebody might want to look at some of our board and commission appointments because we probably have some people whose terms have expired and they've just kept going and going and going because at some point, and I don't know if it was pandemic related or a little before that or a little bit after that, but just kind of lost track a lot of those. If you don't see them day to day, you only see them when they have a monthly or a bi-monthly meeting. It's not as readily apparent as if it's your maintenance director or your IT director or something like that.
I guess I could be. But. But you could become. Like the, like being ten. You know? You get very comfortable and very relaxed. So would it be? I have no problem. Please do a valuation annually with.
I was told performance evaluation. Something. Or issue. We address those issues up with performance. They see the good evaluation. Because they're all actual employees. Like, like, everybody does all. But I, we do need evaluation. It's all for a year.
Yeah, I'm all. I was a. I just think it's good. I think. Nothing but. Sounds positive. Whatever else they believe that's on. As a great employee.
And if the commissioners, commissioners aren't happy with them, they know it before it's too late. We don't have some of the situations we had.
Completely. And working. Haven't been. Like.
I don't like. You need to be. Teresa, can you look? Our, our heads of our department and evaluation last year? Valuation. There are. Do you remember? Who was used? L. J. And question that he asked. Teresa, can you look to see if those are in files? Get his copies of those? Regular. Actually. I won't. I think it's some of the. And. Oh. Good. Yeah. Good. Anything else? At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. We ask, we have public comments, we ask that you state your name, residence. We ask that you speak once and please leave your comments in approximately two minutes.
My name is Joe Lawyer. The hangout I made is regarding questions of votes that I have looked up and checked out and solved with. About our issues with it. I have to say.
Thank you.
You want to host?
Hey, don't rush. I have questions about plan owners that are facing. I mean, if there's any or anything. And. Property value type project.
I don't know that was brought up. You see. Meetings. About property value. But. Didn't want to. I, I didn't. I. Didn't know that. I'm. And. Legal. APC.
Jenny, I can add a little to that. There is technically still language in the ordinance. It doesn't mandate them, but it mandates the APC or BZ, BZA to investigate the necessity on a case-by-case project. But it is only in a scenario when either an upzoning occurs. So from a less intensive use to a more intensive use or a special exception. So because the ordinance was changed to allow solar by right instead of by BZA special exception or zoning change, that applicability disappeared. Because you are correct, when the Mammoth Project and maybe even Moss Creek was first approved by BZA special exception, that was part of the conditions and commitments. And then litigation proceeded and then the ordinance was changed and they actually submitted their building permits under the updated ordinance. And so there is language, but unless a project is required to get zoning change or special exception approval, it's not true. So.
So for those, maybe some were built by. Last. Time. They did away with it. That's what we're. One of those was the special exception. The developer would have. Yeah. Special. What to do. Off. The April after. Instead of. We do have. President. My opinion. Here are two or three. Have to be.
So this requires.
Right. So for instance, and like I said, an upzone. So if I wanted to turn farmland into a confined operation because that would require rezoning from A1 to A2, then the plan commission could say, yes, we're only going to allow this if you agree to a property value guarantee.
Ask. Is there any county that's suffering? Could it?
Good. Could be more of a council issue.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I can read a book. I read, I tried to research about the prices of the comps that are down. There are studies that say they do, there are studies that say that they don't. But really, it's whatever you want to believe. Like. But I cannot tell you that if they go down or they don't. And the studies that I read that they would go down, it would be because it was a, it wasn't a rural area. It was more like a dense area. So I don't know. But what I can tell is what I told, I told my name. That if you ever wanted to sell, I would be sure to do the, adjust the market value, but I would be fair. No, I didn't just bank house by. So. I think my point is, if somebody wants to sell because they don't want to be close to the color panels, then perhaps talking to the landowner. I've heard of landowners that left like 20 acres so that the neighbors wouldn't be, you know, affected. That they would be 20 acres, they would have put the acres. So that the people would be affected. So it's just an idea.
Others? Your motion is second. Those favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed.